Roca.
Zerby.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Milky.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Tyson.
Here.
Hunter is here.
Okay. Meeting minutes from August first, twenty eighteen. Any comments? Changes, corrections? If not, support.
Move to approve.
Support.
Move by Gross, support by Milky. Those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. Correspondents, board reports? Brian?
I don't think I have anything from Planning Commission unless you have questions.
Okay, next, approval of the agenda.
Motion approved, the agenda is presented.
Andy's motion?
Support.
Support by Jake. Those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approved. Okay, this time I'll open up public comment to anybody who could make a comment not on the agenda. So step forward, state your name and address. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. New business. Item today is a text interpretation, twenty eighteen dash zero one, interpretation of section twenty-three point two B and C for a restaurant slash brewery.
Sure. To give anybody some background on what we're doing tonight at tonight's meeting, we are conducting a public hearing, part of a text interpretation. The interpretation is from sections twenty-three point two, point B through C, section B five, Highway Business District in the Charter Township Union zoning ordinance. Publication of notice was placed in the paper that on Wednesday, September nineteenth, twenty eighteen, at seven P M., we would hold a public hearing for the purposes of any interested persons in the following request for an interpretation from section twenty-three point two, point B through C, B five, Highway Business District, Union Township zoning ordinance. This is requested by Jim Holden, G M. of Mountain Town Brewing Company. The applicant requests an interpretation stating, assuming that a restaurant and brewery were part of the same operation on the premises, that if a brewery's off-site consumption does not exceed its onsite consumption, it would be permitted use under sections twenty-three point two B and C of the township's zoning ordinance. Before the, tonight's agenda item, the applicant had came to the township, inquired about this being a possibility as a use. I recommended to the applicant that they seek a zoning compliance letter. In order to fulfill that zoning compliance letter, I would need questions answered for more information on what the use would look like, how it would operate. Questions or answers to those questions were supplied back to me. Everyone on the board has copies of those questions and that correspondence between the applicant and myself. My determination in the zoning compliance letter was that the use would be permitted. For extra assurance to the applicant, they have asked for a text interpretation. This meeting is not a review of my interpretation, but I've given you my determination and my interpretation as background for the members of this board, so that you're not going into your own interpretation completely cold, that you have some kind of background, or at least another vantage point to look at the interpretation from. But tonight is an interpretation of sections twenty-three point two B C. And again, I'll state, it's assuming that a restaurant and brewery were part of the same operation on the premises, that if a brewery's off-site consumption does not exceed its onsite consumption, it would be permitted use under sections twenty-three point two B and C of the township zoning ordinance. Before the, tonight's agenda item, the applicant had came to the township, inquired about this being a possibility as a use. I recommended to the applicant that they seek a zoning compliance letter. In order to fulfill that zoning compliance letter, I would need questions answered for more information on what the use would look like, how it would operate. Questions or answers to those questions were supplied back to me. Everyone on the board has copies of those questions and that correspondence between the applicant and myself. My determination in the zoning compliance letter was that the use would be permitted. For extra assurance to the applicant, they have asked for a text interpretation. This meeting is not a review of my interpretation, but I've given you my determination and my interpretation as background for the members of this board, so that you're not going into your own interpretation completely cold, that you have some kind of background, or at least another vantage point to look at the interpretation from. But tonight is an interpretation of sections twenty-three point two B C. And again, I'll state, it's assuming that a restaurant and brewery were part of the same operation on the premises, that if a brewery's off-site consumption does not exceed its onsite consumption, it would be permitted use under sections twenty-three point two B and C of the township zoning ordinance. Before the, tonight's agenda item, the applicant had came to the township, inquired about this being a possibility as a use. I recommended to the applicant that they seek a zoning compliance letter. In order to fulfill that zoning compliance letter, I would need questions answered for more information on what the use would look like, how it would operate. Questions or answers to those questions were supplied back to me. Everyone on the board has copies of those questions and that correspondence between the applicant and myself. My determination in the zoning compliance letter was that the use would be permitted. For extra assurance to the applicant, they have asked for a text interpretation. This meeting is not a review of my interpretation, but I've given you my determination and my interpretation as background for the members of this board, so that you're not going into your own interpretation completely cold, that you have some kind of background, or at least another vantage point to look at the interpretation from. But tonight is an interpretation of sections twenty-three point two B C. And again, I'll state, it's assuming that a restaurant and brewery were part of the same operation on the premises, that if a brewery's off-site consumption does not exceed its onsite consumption, it would be permitted use under sections twenty-three point two B and C of the township zoning ordinance.
Jim Holden, five oh six West Broadway Street, and I appreciate the courtesy of making a special meeting happen tonight. I'm under a little bit of a time constraint in where I'm at currently in the city of Mount Pleasant, and trying to make my way out into the township. The, the microbrewery business has changed considerably since I started ten years ago on my site on Pickard Street. I was the ninety-sixth brewery in the state, microbrewery in the state, when I started ten years ago. I was asked to get into that business because people really enjoyed the beer at Mountain Town Station, and they wanted to have that in other areas of the state. The state of Michigan doesn't allow a brew pub operation like a Mountain Town Station to do that. We can't distribute our products at all. That's just how the law works. What my license allows me though is to brew that beer on site at Mountain Town Station, but also have other wines, spirits, and other people's beers as well in the restaurant. And I think that's very important for that restaurant to be a full-service restaurant from there. So I started, it started off as Mount Pleasant Brewing Company, but because of a trademark infringement out of Missouri, I had to change that name. And we ended up with Mountain Town Brewing, because every time we were out and about in the marketplace, people were saying, we love that Mountain Town beer. We like that Mountain Town beer. And so we decided to go with the Mountain Town Brewing name itself. So we started ten years ago, and we started slowly in the mid-Michigan area and slowly expanded out from there. But in ten years, there have been another four hundred breweries that have opened up since I opened up. So the marketplace is totally different out there. So when you look at a Fabiano Brothers, let's say, who was a great distributor of mine, and still are, I was number three in their portfolio for microbrew beers. Now they have over fifty in their portfolio. So trying to go out to a bar or restaurant, Meyer, Walmart, or Sam's Club is a different animal now. And I employed a whole bunch of sales staff, and salespeople had their vehicles, and they went out and helped promote that beer out there. I wasn't making market penetration, and my barrels that I was selling were starting to decline over there. Then I was down in Elma, and I was walking around town down there and found that, you know, it'd be a great spot for a small brewery down there as well. Michigan law allows another satellite taproom basically to happen. And so we bring beer from the mothership down there and things like that, and we're finding that when you start selling beer on the draft handles, that's a, it's much more profitable to the organization that is going through that, that, that cut of the distributor and then the retailer going from there. And so for us to sell beer out in the marketplace just isn't happening, so our sales have declined considerably over there. And so I started taking a look at where I want to take this, this microbrewery. And it really is more on the aspect of more restaurant oriented than it is into the, the general population of distribution. So for me, I want to look at going to things that I do in the private markets. So I do private sale beer for the Pink Pony on Mackinac Island. I do the Bavarian Dark Beer for the Bavarian Inn over there. I do the Midtown Ale down in Lansing for the Midtown Company. I do the Machine Shop down in Ann Arbor. So I'm doing more private sale beers, private contract beers than I am in general marketplace. Basically, I'm cutting out around sixty-five to seventy percent of my portfolio out there in the marketplace, trying to, to get that one nut here and there. It's just not happening anymore as we continue to decline. So I'm looking for a new facility. I am not going to be renewing my lease in my current location, and I want to go out in this new development. I've always had thoughts about this new development over here to go out here from there. Obviously, this, this property has a lot of controversy to it, and that's why I'm here with you today, just to codify, this is what I want to do. It is going to be basically a smokehouse restaurant, is what I want to do, with still the manufacturing of beer in the back. People will, still will come in and pick up beer, but it's not going to be like it was ten years ago, had, how sales have declined considerably over there. And so when Peter and I met, and Mark, I said, here's what's going to happen, you know, does it meet the zoning? And they believe it did from there, the way I've outlined it. And I also wanted to get that codification from this board as well, that I will be more of a restaurant. There'll be more sales in the facility itself than there will be outside. I'm going from nine thousand square foot down to six thousand square foot, and going to a much smaller facility. I have a full, two-page menu, it'll be a full kitchen inside this facility compared to where I'm at right now, which is more, as I call it, a George Foreman kitchen. Couple of microwave ovens, couple of panini presses, things like that. This is a full twelve-foot hood with all the amenities underneath it, so. You know, and when I sit on that corner and I see the traffic going by every day on that road, when I look at how busy McDonald's is over there, and the success that Mitchell's has had so far over there, I think that's the up-and-coming corner, and I want to be kind of a part of that over there. So I negotiated a building that I hope to own over time, and therefore I want to bring Mountain Towns home over to there. The taproom itself, restaurant, is going to be roughly the same size that I'm in now, which is about sixty seats, but also have some seating outside too as well, with the nice garage doors that roll up, so you have that outdoor feel inside and out, and make it just a nice place to stop by in the afternoon, hopefully, and have dinner, carry out, and those other things from there. I know the restaurant business pretty well, and so that's why I'm adapting this to a larger kitchen. That's what I want to do, and open up to questions.
So right now, you perceive your distribution sales that you have now, is it going to shrink, and you're going down to just the specific ones, more?
More private sales is what I'm going to do.
Private sales.
No, I've cut out, I was in Wisconsin, I was in Indiana, and, and Ohio as well. I've, I've actually ended all those, those contracts down there. So by the time I got out of state, it was costing me too much money to do that, try to focus on Michigan, and that's the shrinking as well. So private label, for the most part, I'm doing the Moose ninety-four point five, the Moose Country Ale. Been a great success for us, and those are in specialty places. So I'm going to, I'm going to focus on that because I have the equipment for it. I have shrunk the labor down enough to handle that, but also to handle the, the increase in volume in the restaurant itself.
So I think you said two trucks per week distributing?
Yeah.
That's part of this, or that's what's currently?
No, right now we have about four trucks a week coming in right now.
Okay.
Again, those sales continue to decline. I'm going to end Indiana at the end of this year. So all this really happens at the end of this year, as I get this place opened up, hopefully in January. That's what I'm looking at. So it's all in combination, and it all, it's all obviously on record with the T T B and things like that, how the sales work.
Right, and then maybe more sales increase in the restaurant?
Very much so.
The half gallons and the growlers?
And so we got the growler sales, I'll still be able to get a six-pack to go, but it really isn't the draft handles. That's where the sales happen.
Okay, so that's in the restaurant?
Yes.
Side of it?
That's correct. Yep, still have eighteen taps, but people eat, they drink. You know, a lot of people just don't go in and have a beer and want to leave. They want to eat something, and that kitchen doesn't promote that at all. It just doesn't work, and we haven't promoted that because we're not a restaurant there. We're just a taproom. And originally, when I started this project, I didn't want a taproom whatsoever. I just wanted production, and the brewer said, you have to have a taproom. Okay, so I made the decision to do it, and I'm glad I did. Now I want to expand that to the next level from there.
So you're looking at, this is more curiosity, not directly relatable to, I think, the text interpretation, but so you're looking at a standalone building structure then?
So the building will actually be attached to the McGurk Building. So I'm looking at attaching, heading on, it's called Jen's Way, which is the road going into that property, heading to the south. So McGurk's on the frontage, I'm going to be heading to the south. I looked at doing an independent building, but the cost got so hard, excessive. By the time I get all the utilities into there and all the site costs and asphalt, it just wasn't worthwhile for me to do that, so I'm going to be attaching to, to.
Adding to that existing?
Heading that south. So here's that, that building's allowed right now, or permitted, almost like a U shape.
Right.
I'm starting to make that turn on the U.
Okay.
In the hopes that that continues to develop as well down through there.
From the original site plan that was?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
Because that stuff is already in place, which is nice. The asphalt, they have the curbs there, those type of things, the water's onsite. So that helps, brought, it brought my cost down to make it affordable for me to do that.
So you're, you're moving just the taproom?
I'm moving the entire brewing operations.
Yeah, but your, your restaurant on?
Restaurant on downtown states.
So this will be a secondary, more restaurant, because your taproom, like you said, is a small kitchen.
Yeah. And I'm trying to do something that doesn't compete with Mountain Town Station as well. That's always hard.
Right.
So I'm, I'm really doing that southern fare. So it's, it's smoked brisket, pulled pork, smoked chicken, cornbread, beans, those type of things. So it's really a comfort food, smokehouse theme restaurant is what it's going to be.
And then the distribution, you talked about the two trucks a week.
Mm-hmm.
Is that primarily barrels or barrels and bottles or?
Yeah, so right now, currently, we're about seventy percent bottles and thirty percent in the kegs themselves. We see that roughly moving more toward barrelage from there as we get out of that packaging.
That's what I wondered, with the, with the private label, I was wondering if that's more barrel oriented?
Yes. It's, it's tap handles. We find that it's, the profitability's in the tap handle, it's not in the cases. So the distributor makes the money in the cases, the retailer makes the money, but the supplier does not because of the cost involved, and we do such a low volume, and that's declined as well. So we're looking at selling off our bottler, bottler that we have right now. What else do you got for me, Brian?
I had those three.
I hear them going, so. No, no, can't have that. By law, I cannot have that. So I just have to stick with the microbrew license, and we do small wine making as well, John, so we do five-gallon carboys of, of fruit wines and things like that. Because some people come into the place and they don't want to have beer, and so we, we have wine. But that's such a small portion. We don't distribute any wine. It's just for the convenience of our guests that come in from there. And Michigan law does not allow me to have that license. Where Mountain Town Station, I brew all my beer on site there. They can drink as much as they want, but I cannot distribute out of Mountain Town Station downtown.
Which is why, which is why you had to have the taproom separate from your restaurant?
That is absolutely correct, yes. So those are the two separate entities that we have from there.
Anybody else have questions?
Pretty straightforward from me.
It was very well explained in.
Yeah, and staff did a great job with it. I just want to codify this here to make sure we're good, because I'm going to be spending a lot of money in this location. And I just want to make sure we're, we're good to move forward with it, because we ordered steel that has to be canceled by tomorrow, so this is the day. So thank you.
Okay, I think at this time, we'll, we'll deliberate, Jim.
Thank you.
We do want to open up a public hearing.
True, thanks. So at this time, now, we'll open up to public hearing on the text interpretation. If anybody has any comment, step forward, state your name and address. Hearing none, close the public comment. More deliberate.
I have no objection.
I, I don't either. I, looking at the current use and Peter's interpretation, I, I have no, I concur, concur with.
I mean, he's, he's going down, so I think the distribution side, the activity from there, I don't think will be a impact on.
Fits nicely into the B five, as it's currently sold. Future's a little different, but we don't have that. That's not our option.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm a proponent, but I have some questions nonetheless. Peter, I just, this is more for you. On your text interpretation, this document that contains your description of this, you listed this as a commercial light industrial future land use intent? And I was trying to look for an address on here. My assumption is where I think the applicant was referring to, but I didn't know that. And it seemed odd to me in, if we're looking at something related to a B five, excuse me, without knowing the address, you can't know the future land use.
Actually, you can.
No, you, you, you can't because?
Page thir, or page forty-five of the master plan.
I understand, but the future land use may not match with zoning at all, therefore you cannot. And not only that, this isn't marked as, in the future land use, it's marked as a commercial retail. So I just kind of want to clarify that. It's the community's retail service. So if you look it up, the property itself, the future land use is not commercial industrial. So I wanted to clear that for you, for you. And I, and, and the reason to bring this up too was, in the future, if we're looking at something that's zoned, without an address, I don't know how you would know the future land use.
You know the future land use by looking at the, on page forty-five of the master plan, it lists the zoning districts and the future land use districts. And this chart was designed to show the current zoning districts and what, when you look at the future land use map and the current zoning districts, which of them fit together?
Correct, to give a correlation. However, when you look at the future land use map, you'll find, you'll find some that are future land use of commercial, that are zoned as agricultural. So you wouldn't say, well, this is an ag one, but his future land use is ag, right? Because it lines up with rural preservation, let's say, right? You see my, my point? This was for future stuff that you do.
Well, and, I mean, if you look at the, and this is where I got it from, in the master plan, it says, some districts will need to be amended to incorporate the recommendations of this plan. So not everything fits with what is actually there today.
Exactly. So therefore, I don't think you can take a zoning and, from that, without having an address, you won't know what the future land use is, right? Because the future land use in this is actually different than what you listed.
Because when I did this, I didn't look at an address. I looked at just section B five, Highway Business District.
Okay.
And that's where I came to the community industrial mix.
That's what the applicant was asking.
I didn't use an address. I used the B five text interpretation.
That's why I was asking about the address too.
No, I, I didn't consider, I didn't consider an address. I considered just the B five section.
Even more so than you don't know what the future land use is, becau, because the future land use isn't based on existing zoning. There is a mapping of descriptions of future land use and how they relate to current zoning, but not, the, the maps don't line up.
The actual zoning.
Right. And so I don't think you should be using for future, anything other than a known future land use.
Would you feel that way, Brian, on a, even on a text interpretation? Because this would be in a text interpretation, not necessarily for a particular address, but for a district, correct?
Agreed. That's why, so this is for something I want for the future, that unless it's a known future land use, we shouldn't be projecting what it is. Because in this case, it's actually, the future land use used in this document is different than the actual location we happen to be looking at. Not that that's relevant for text interpretation.
True.
All I'm stating is I'm going to have an issue with this in the future if we do this more. You follow me?
So you're saying that you don't want me to reference page forty-five in the master plan?
Not if it's not relevant, no. And in this case, it wasn't relevant, because we don't have an address. And if we did have the address as to what is being proposed, the future land use would not be what you listed. It would be something else. There's still a correlation between what the zoning is, I mean, that's.
Between a B five and industrial, or whatever, they're correlated.
Then it, yeah, except I would argue that, that the future land use for, yeah. A lot of those B five sites is not commercial light industrial. The future land use may be very different than that.
Right.
Some, some of the current B five sites are in line with that projected commercial light industrial future land use. And, and many don't exist that way. So without an address, I'm just saying, and I don't think we should be looking at the future land use. Unless you have that specific address. So this wasn't anything about your stuff. This is, because it threw me at first when I was reading this, and I'm like, oh, light industrial, okay, that works. But then as I looked at it, I'm like, I'm guessing it's this property, and it doesn't line up. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I think I get what you're, so by putting the, even though we're doing the text interpretation, by putting the future land use category, and because, you know, for whatever the future land use category is labeled, this one, commercial industrial mix, you're saying by doing that, it changes the way you're going to then look at the text interpretation? And so if I left it blank, it's an easier?
No, I think it's just implying that, when I read this, I'm like, oh, the future land use of this is commercial light industrial, but, um, but it may or may not be true for any particular B five. And so I think it's, it's improper to say that that would be the intended future land use of any B five. But for this particular case, it is correct. No, it's not. The, this particular case, if we look at this address, it's actually commercial retail, not commercial light industrial. Which is how I thought of this, and I'm like, okay, we shouldn't be using premise of future land use unless we have an address. I know it's a sticking point, but it, this threw me for a little bit.
I guess at this point, I'd agree to disagree, because I, I remember us working on this section of the, the master plan, and, I mean, state zoning is a key mechanism for achieving the desired land use pattern and quality of development advocated in the plan. This section provides a useful guide relative to the inconsistencies between current zoning patterns and proposed future land use designations.
Yes, it is a guide for terminology between the two, but it doesn't, it's not a match.
In this case, it's not a match.
Right.
But when I'm doing the text interpretation, the text interpretation is for B five parcels, districts, anywhere in the township. It wasn't for any, I was not doing an interpretation for a specific site. So if the, for example, if we were doing an interpretation for an agricultural district, I would reference future land use, it's listed as three. You have rural preservation, rural, for R one, it'd be listed as residential, which is a.
Not recreational institutional, because it's all solicited as that.
And a, well, yeah, resident or recreational institutional, whatever, whichever box matches up.
Well, there's two in that case.
And there's three in agricultural.
So my point was it wasn't relevant to this, and therefore shouldn't be part of the, part of this.
I, I think we're kind of going down a rabbit trail that's tied pertinent to.
We are. Part of it is we have a new, new master plan, and I'm trying to apply it, and this is something that threw me, because I, when I first read this as light industrial, I'm like, okay, brewing fits in light industrial. But then as I looked into it further, I'm like, no, but it's the future land use, so this isn't that. It's zoned. Not to discount your opinion, I believe that you are on to something, but I would like to call the question the text interpretation, and then make a, a note that we would get back to clearing this up, maybe after we've dealt with the applicants.
Yeah, I don't know what we have to do as a board, but I, maybe.
It will, it, it could be problematic for another specific site if the circumstances were different.
And, and that was my whole point.
Yeah, I see, because by having that category listed, you were looking at something maybe that might not confuse you. So I think, between the zoning administrator and the master plan and the, you guys are going to maybe work it out and review it a little bit more. As far as our text interpretation for our applicant, um, I guess we need a, a full motion and everything.
Be ready for, entertain a motion?
To, to approve this or deny it, right, Peter?
Yeah, you're ultimately in the memo I supplied with you. Um, let me get to that, the objective. Uh, determine the following, assuming that a restaurant and brewery were part of the same operation on the premises, that if a brewery's off-site consumption does not exceed its onsite consumption, it would be a permitted use under sections twenty-three point two B and C of the township zoning ordinance.
So we would need a motion to the effect, it's a permitted use, basically on a B five.
Yeah, the, the motion would be that, um-
I'll, I will make a motion that the, if the brewery's off-site consumption does not exceed its onsite consumption, it would be a permitted use under sections twenty-three, two B and C of the township zoning ordinance.
Support it.
Support my growth? Both in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those both? Hearing none? Motion approved.
Can I ask a question then?
Yep, did I miss you, Brian?
You, you did. I wanted to ask a question regarding this. So when we define accessory use, could you, could you define that for me, Peter?
Sure.
And how our zoning uses that, because I was looking, I mean, I know the definition. I guess I was trying to look at how that's applied, because we've had issues in the past. I, I'm supportive of this project, by the way. But I, but these brought up issues that I wanted to understand. So when we defined accessory use, part of the argument was that as long as the brewing isn't larger than the restaurant itself as far as production, right? That's the case for it to be an accessory use versus a primary use?
And consumption is, is what is the line.
It's within the same footprint.
So is any accessory use regardless of whether it's permitted in a district, allowed in any other district?
So when we, if you look at section three point two definitions, accessory use, uh, any use customarily incidental and subordinate to the main use of the premises.
Right.
So if you view the, uh, the production, the brewery onsite along with the restaurant, um, if you consider that to be both incidental and as long as it remains subordinate to the main use, the restaurant, of the premises, it would be an accessory use. If you find it to not be incidental or not subordinate to the main use, it wouldn't be accessory. Uh, if you look to then section-
This is what I was looking for, I think.
Section three point five eight, principal or main use. It states the primary or predominant use of a lot or structure. So in this case, the restaurant, if it's going to claim to be the principal or main use, it has to be the pri- primary or predominant use of a lot or structure. If it is not, you cannot call it the principal or main use.
And in this case, using this particular text interpretation that was just approved as an example, I think the supporting information of how they distribute and, and the, the actual quantities in question demonstrate compliance to prove that accessory versus primary use.
So what I was looking for in the ordinance that I didn't find is what accessory uses are allowed for in, is any accessory use allowed?
Each category.
In, sorry?
In each zoning district?
Yeah, are any, any accessory?
Statement, no, Jim, we need to read just for the record.
Is any accessory, you want me to table this for a last discussion? Because I'm happy to. Then we can take care of Jim.
Yes.
I would like to be able to ask my question of Peter if I may.
So we got section, hold on here.
One statement for you, Jim, to read.
Okay, it's actually two statements. The decision of the board shall not be final until twenty-one days after it is made. It is not final until minutes have been approved. And any person having an interest affected by any such ordinance shall have the right to appeal to the circuit court on questions of law and fact during said period. Further, any person or persons or any taxpayer department, board or bureau of the township agree by any decision, the board of appeals shall have the right to appeal to the Isabella County Circuit Court on questions of law and fact.
Yep. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyway, thank you for telling me that. Thank you, gentlemen, for everything.
Thank you. Appreciate you entertaining me, entertaining me on this. So what I was trying to learn as I was reading through this, I'm like, okay, so what does our zoning ordinance say about permitted use versus accessory use? What accessory uses are allowed in our zoning? Right, I, I, I see the brewery as an accessory use. So can I have any accessory use in any zoning?
It, it, if you go, well, I mean, it goes back to the, the definition. For it to qualify as an accessory use, it has to be customarily incidental and subordinate. So even if it's subordinate, it has to be customarily incidental. And so when you go through the list of permitted uses, if you cannot convince me or in this board collectively, that whatever accessory use, whether it's subordinate, if it's not customarily incidental to that permitted use, I wouldn't call it an accessory.
The permitted use piece that you're going to get hung up on, because you're asking, can anything be an accessory use? Well, anything that is an allowable permitted, uh, permitted use. So like if I go to section twenty-six, light industrial, and it's very clearly defined what is allowable as a permitted use.
Right.
As long as the two accessory and primary items or, or uses are found or permitted in that zoning district, then one has to be the dominant and one has to be the subordinate.
But both have to be allowed in the-
Both have to be permitted in that district.
Then I would argue that that brewery was not allowed in a B five.
It's listed B five as bar, grill.
Yeah, but manufacturing of, if, if you look at light industrial, when you get into like bakery goods and stuff like that, um, that applies stronger to me. Because you're manufacturing foods that are being, not, not just used there, they're being distributed, right?
Foods aren't. Oh, for a bakery, you're saying?
Bakeries and those kinds of things where they're baked goods, where you're selling baked goods.
So, so when I look at section twenty-three?
I do just want to cut a berry off. We just held the public hearing. We've deliberated on this specific brewery.
No, I'm trying to understand the zoning.
But I, I, I don't want, I don't want us to go into this kind of conversation now that the interpretation has been interpreted.
I don't see it reversing it.
But I don't see that-
At this time, we, yeah, we, we close the text interpretation.
I would like to come in and meet with you then, Peter, to kind of go through this. Because I'm just trying to, I was trying to understand how to apply the zoning to it and I was struggling with a couple of cases on this.
Okay. I think for the, the meeting, for the text interpretation, I think, um, at this point, we'll move on. And if you guys want to discuss the items later. Okay, at this time, other business. Peter, have any other business or?
Nope. Uh, we do have a, um, scheduled meeting next month, but at this time I don't have any, um, scheduled items. Uh, however, it would be important for us to meet next month to, um, approve the minutes from tonight. Uh, therefore we could then start the twenty-one day countdown, um, from approval of the minutes.
So in two weeks, basically?
Mm-hmm.
We could come in and discuss some of this stuff too, you know, on that meeting time.
Other business or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the other reason I'm bringing some of this up too is I keep thinking about the rewrite of the zoning. And so I keep looking for things that are not clear to me or, this had nothing to do with the applicant. These are the things I'm finding as I'm doing my due diligence.
Yeah, I think it's important moving forward.
Okay, at this time I'll go off to extended public comment on any item. Anybody curious to step forward, state your name and address? Hearing none, close the public comment. And final board comments? Anybody else have any other comments? Hearing none, uh, during the meeting, seven thirty-seven.
So let me ask the question then, would you-